Do we, we don't need to specify the order when we take it out of order.
Yeah, just take it out of order.
Okay, alright.
Does anything continuously take things out of order?
Alright, good, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the April 5th, 2021 Brookfield Select Board Meeting. All rise for the State of Pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you for that. Okay, could I get a motion to take everything out of order?
Sure, I'll make that motion that we take everything out of order tonight.
I'll second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, I think what we would like to do is start actually with the recognition portion of the program. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes. So, I want to talk a little bit about this. So, one of the benefits of bringing on board a town administrator has been that some of the things that tended to fall through the cracks horribly over time was that we've done a poor job of celebrating people's service to the town. We make the announcement kind of almost like a rope from a standpoint of, hey, we've got these anniversaries. I appreciate the fact that at least firing EMS has been very good at providing that information to us historically. But I really wanted to take a few minutes to, to open up and, and talk a little bit about the fact that we do have somebody with us today who has had a truly substantive service to the town. We're actually here tonight to, to recognize Donna LaFleur for forty-five years. So, that's just amazing. It's, uh, it, it really means a lot. It really shows a level of dedication and commitment to the community, just as an individual and, and, you know, to the, the folks who need the service the most really in our town fundamentally. So, pull out the formal game of the program.
Do, do, is this in?
Yes, it's in your pack.
Yes.
And a little background.
So, just a little background.
Yep. So, just to, just to talk a little bit about the, about what that, that forty-five years is represented. So, you've been an EMT since nineteen seventy-six and the head of EMS since nineteen eighty-seven. Paramedic, which is that, that higher level of service since nineteen ninety-four. And you are actually our first certified paramedic in town, correct? So, you played a huge role and started the insurance billing for ambulance transports and worked with the EMS region to establish the appropriate ambulance staffing guidelines. And this has allowed our ambulances to operate at a paramedic level with a paramedic and a basic EMT, which is really important. We were talking prior to the meeting about how with a small towns, it's really, really hard to staff everything, whether it's a volunteer or a paid physician. And being able to ensure that those type of guidelines were established so that we could provide that level of service is, is huge. This was something that had not been done before in Massachusetts. And we were one of the first four communities in the state to be licensed like that. You spent thirteen years also as a police officer for the town. Firefighter since nineteen ninety-two and our first female firefighter. And then dispatcher at the former municipal-run Regional Dispatch Center. And this one is, is, you know, Donna, honestly, the one thing that was clear very early on as people get involved in the, with the town of Brookfield is that in some, in some ways, you're really the heart of, of what we try to do. And I think that as the, being the Brookfield Coordinator for Toys for Joy really indicates that, that, that core of caring that, that really represents the service that you've provided to not just the town, but the region over the years. Cause that really touches very close to home for a lot of families. So, um, yeah, and, and we, well, anything we could say here is probably not sufficient, but thank you.
Thank you.
No, did, did you have any, any other specific comments that you care for? So, let's, let's do this. Let's bring you up and jump.
We have a certificate of appreciation from the town of Brookfield. And we've been grateful to Donna LaFleur for forty-five years to, uh, and we're very sorry to the town.
Thank you so much.
And small token of appreciation.
Oh, thank you so much. But I'd really like to thank, thank you for this. But it's been my honor to help the town, taking this. My father, when I was growing up, my father was in the Air Force and we moved there a couple of years. And I felt like I never was able to put down roots. So, when we moved, my husband and I moved to Brookfield. I put down roots and I needed to do everything I could do to help. And a lot of the people in the town have helped me do this. From my neighbor, Dawn Hawkins, who used to watch my children.
Well, that's good that you do this.
At the top of the hat, she would take them in. And my family for missing all the birthdays and Christmases that there's still a lot whining about. And especially the people I work with. They're a very compassionate group of people that really care about the people in town. So, I want to thank you.
And you've been such an asset to the town. And I have to say personally, you know, I've been taking the ambulance a couple of times and you've been on and I always feel unsafe just to answer there. And I feel, I think a lot of people feel the same way.
I always try to be a true.
It's family. I'm very new to Brookfield. And I've heard repeatedly that it's Donna, it's the heart of the ambulance.
Thank you so much. I have about two more years left in proportion.
But thank you, thank you for, for, you know, leaders really set the tone for the people that are part of the group. And I, I would have to credit how the feedback that we get about all of our EMTs and paramedics.
They're good people.
You know, to, to model, model the right behavior. You treat your people right, you find the right people, and, and that empathy is, is a piece of everything they offer. So, just thank you. I hope so. And thank you for supporting her, all these moves and what she's done. What's, I'm sorry.
You didn't have much choice.
You didn't have much choice.
Outstanding. But you did support her, so that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, did, did, did anyone have a preference for what we should speak to next?
Well, we have two gentlemen in the audience who would probably appreciate being bumped up a little bit.
Okay, and they are currently number six?
Yeah, number six.
So, let's, let's hop to sign contract for Central, Central Street Water.
There's no contract.
There's no contract. You have the contract.
I have, I have two originals. Dennis, if you'd like to come up and address, you know, the, the big process of moving doctors and so on. Just move a little closer so you.
What I can, what I can also do is, do you want me to read the abutter announcement?
Yes, please read the abutter announcement as well. We just sent out all of them.
So, so we'll, we'll actually kick this off with one of the two announcements, which is the Central Street Water Main Upgrade. So, this letter was sent out to all the abutters, which, and it reads, "Central Street will be getting a complete makeover in twenty twenty-two, almost entirely grant-funded. The project will include, will begin with water main work in the spring, followed by sidewalk improvements, drainage, and roadway paving throughout the summer and fall. We'll be using ARPA grant funding to replace the water main on Central Street. The water project will begin mid-April of twenty twenty-two and scheduled to be completed by the end of June twenty twenty-two. The water project will include replacing the water fire, I'm sorry, the water main, fire hydrants and water services from the water main to roughly the property line of each household. We will begin, begin upgrading the twelve-inch cast iron water main from the Route Nine intersection to Pleasant Street with twelve-inch ductile, ductile iron main. The six-inch cast iron water main from Pleasant Street to Common Street will be upgraded to an eight-inch ductile iron main. There will be a minor water, there will be minor water interruptions for short periods throughout this project. Some planned, some unplanned. We will work with everybody to keep cars, buses, and pedestrians moving safely as well." And this was mailed on three thirty twenty twenty-two, and I can tell you it did show up in my mailbox, so thank you.
Yeah, so I just wanted people at Central Street to know that something's going on. We're gonna start this thing and we're gonna do all we do to keep everything.
Minimize, yeah, minimize the disruption, but understand it's not possible.
We're not gonna do without water.
Right.
Yeah, maybe from time to time, but actually we're.
Okay, great.
I heard it, yeah, I heard it mentioned at the elementary school this morning too, in the office.
We have a separate.
Yeah, I just heard him say that, that there's a project going on on Central Street. So, they got the notice too.
Yeah, we have some more coordinating buses and the schools, we can't shut the school off.
Yeah.
Can you, can you sit up here?
We, uh, we, we put this project out to bid as we had planned. Richardi Brothers out of Worcester there, the low bidder. Leonard Engineering gave a recommendation for us to go with Richardi Brothers. They checked the references and projects and.
And there's no reason, there's no reason to exclude them fundamentally. So, they came in, what was bitter, and they've done good work.
Everything checked out with them, the timeline. We have a tight deadline, June thirtieth, to finish this project. They can meet the deadline, so they're, they're in.
Makes perfect sense.
Yeah, actually excited to have them with, with a tight deadline.
Okay, so they have a reputation for actually hitting their targets?
Well, that's yet to be seen. I don't know good or bad. It's just getting materials right now. Pipe is like everything else.
In the past, we have used Leonard.
Leonard, we've used, we've used Leonard. So, Leonard did our engineering.
Oh, he did, yes, cause we have used them in the past.
Yep, and Richardi Brothers is gonna do the contracting. Getting materials right now, like everything else, getting pipe is backed up. So, they are fortunate enough to have some pipe.
On hand.
And they can move it around to get it here sooner.
Nice.
Yeah.
Very good. And just, just so people understand, what long-term advantages, disadvantages of going from cast to ductile iron?
It's the material of today.
Okay.
So, cast in the early nineteen hundreds was phenomenal pipe. It's actually fantastic pipe. It is unlined. The lining inside the, the pipe helps with water quality.
Yeah.
But at some point, we have a hundred-year-old water pipe and it's not gonna last forever. So, we have funding and it's time.
Yep. Understood.
Yep.
Okay, great. And just so everybody is aware, the, the full cost of the contract for the water portion is five hundred twenty-three thousand, five hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents. So, can I get a motion for us to sign off on this contract?
I will make a motion to sign off on the contract for the Central Street Water Main Upgrade.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, is it?
Just the chair.
Just the chair? Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
We can't sign off on the funding today, or the funding's available.
Okay, two original copies.
One was back to the contractor.
Did you sign this one?
I did. There we go. Great. Anything else that we want to share with everybody?
That's all I got.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the other announcement we had, unfortunately, we lost the, uh, Fire Chief, is that congratulations. I am pleased to inform you that the Brookfield Fire Department has been selected to receive an Automated Extranorm Defibrillator Equipment Award for twenty-five hundred dollars from the Office of Grants and Research. And the comptroller has determined that it will not require a Commonwealth Standard Contract to be executed, so we will get that, uh, those funds fairly directly. Uh, and that's based off of a quote that was submitted on the application. So, that'll allow us to get a, a newer AED. Do you know if his plan is for that to go on the ambulance or if that's for a different purpose?
I, I'm not sure where it's actually going, but this morning, an email came in, I saw it, and said, "Did you, any's on the phone?" And he hung up the phone and I said, "Did you see that we got the ready because just finished ordering the defibrillator?" That's extremely efficient, well deserved, well done.
Right, cause I remember a while back, we purchased, either we purchased or got a grant to purchase a number of them for both the ambulance and the, um, some of the police.
The police are the ones who have them. The fire department is the one that needed them. So, that's why the fire department got them, only applies to the.
Okay, great.
Do we have one in here?
Not that many.
No.
I just, I thought of that myself. Makes you wonder if we should have one.
We should.
Did you see how much the grant was for?
Yes, I know.
Maybe next year.
No, I know, but as a, as a future thing.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then the batteries are several hundred dollars.
Yes, they are.
Need to be re, put in.
Yeah.
Every.
Yeah, be replaced, recharge.
Yeah, I think it's every forty-eight months or something like that.
Yeah, I thought it's two or three years.
Someone has to be trained on it, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, those, yeah, although the training on it consists of about a forty-five-minute class that says, "Look at the picture, stick the electrodes where it says, make sure you're clear, hit the button."
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't touch the person.
Don't touch the person.
Don't touch the person, yeah. So.
Ryan, next.
Uh, sure, so.
Yes.
Ryan, are you, you're here for the relocation of the pole discussion? Okay, so you are next then. So, this was provided to us a couple of weeks back, actually, inclusive of the, uh, the illustration.
Yep.
And can you walk us through what's in front of us, basically?
Yeah, so, so pretty much they have to move a pole right by the church where the steps are. And that's gonna be for the shared use path to allow room, so they don't have to rework the slope and the steps. I want to move the pole ahead of time, or I want to give National Grid to go ahead to move the pole now, and hopefully they get it done by our deadline. I don't want to give them any time to, you know, say, well, we'll come when the shared use, use path is done.
Right.
Because the pole, the existing pole will be in the way, so.
Right.
I want to get it done sooner than later.
Okay, and have you already talked to the folks over at the church and are they on board with it?
Well, it doesn't actually interfere with them. The pole's moving into the street.
Right, but it does interfere with like the parking and et cetera in that space.
It could, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, it's gonna take up the space of like one car, basically.
Okay. Yeah, just as a courtesy, if we could.
I can touch base with them.
Yeah, if you would, just touch base with, with Clarence or somebody else over there.
Yep.
Make sure they're at least aware.
Okay.
That'd be great.
So, where's it going after?
So, the, the, everything's gonna shift. So, it'll be in the road now, but when the project's done, it'll be on the edge of the sidewalk. So, it, it will no longer be in the road once the project's complete. So, my recommendation would be to let them move it. And we, we just make it safe, put Jersey barriers there with some cones and stuff. And, um, and then as the project goes on, it won't be a problem.
So, National Grid reached out and requested a poll hearing, which we're attempting to schedule for the nineteenth of April, so your next meeting.
Right.
There'll be a poll.
Okay, great.
We just sent you, I know that you're busy. We sent an email earlier today asking if that was an okay date, but now that we're all here.
Yeah, no, that's a.
So, how's that date work?
That's, that's, that's fine for me. Is, is that a date that you can be here?
It's the next meeting.
Yes.
It's the next meeting.
Currently the next scheduled meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be here.
Okay, yeah, so that works.
So, pen, so pending the poll hearing, we let them proceed?
Yeah, and just ask them to proceed post haste.
Yeah.
Cause I know it took us years to get them to replace the one on the corner that was.
That's what I'm afraid of. That's why we're starting now, cause I don't want.
I mean, literally, years.
Everything takes a long time. So, the pole, they never get moved until the project's halfway through. We don't know.
It won't be for lack of trying, though.
Right.
And for trying to get the authorization in place. So, that's.
Yeah.
That's, it's legitimate to at least try and do that.
Yeah.
So, did you need anything else from us other than okaying to put it on the agenda for the nineteenth of the poll hearing?
I think that's all we need. I, as long as it's okay for me, just to give them the, an email saying, yeah, go ahead.
Yes.
You know, put the poll in when, when you can.
Yes.
After the, the hearing.
So, do we need to vote on that, or is that?
No.
No.
No, you don't really.
No, cause I think just, I think it's just good sense.
That's in the fashion of record of, of.
Yeah, and, and nobody has any, any concerns about it, so.
No one concerned or dissenting.
It has to move.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna, it's gonna get moved. It's just a case, it's just a case of trying to get National Grid to, to move a little bit quicker.
Yeah, with no reason to not show up.
Yeah. Can't give them an excuse, got it.
Do you want to discuss the rollover time now while Ryan is still here?
Oh, very good idea. So, we have on the agenda of vacation rollover request, um, it was item number five, which was Donald, her, her, um, hundred and sixty hours and Mike D. eighty hours. Do you remember what they had? Do we have documentation for what they had at the beginning of the year? Cause we set some very explicit goals for them to burn down a certain amount of their vacation. Did they meet the targets?
Yes and no.
When you say yes and no, explain.
So, I would say that maybe they didn't meet the targets, but we're short-staffed this year. Donald was out for a number of month, um, two months with a knee replacement. And then weather started, and so we're, we're struggling to find the time for people to take, take a sufficient amount of time off to meet those goals, actually.
Okay.
They got a lot of, they have a lot of time to use.
They do.
Yeah.
So, alright, so the short answer is actually no.
Yes, I guess that would be.
Did they burn any of it?
Oh, yeah, they used their time.
Well, I know they used this year's time, they just didn't use what they had carried over from the prior year.
Yeah.
So, is, so one of the things, is it possible, can you spare one of them one day a week so they can burn it down?
Yeah, and I, yeah, and I, I do encourage that.
So, if the board were to say they need to use X number of days before the end of the year and they can roll over the difference, would you be able to function?
Oh, yeah, if, if they have to use some time up, I mean, this is the time of year right now is the best time to be, for them to be using their time, and they know that. Pending the outcome of this, you know, that'll determine what they are gonna do, so.
I had a question to ask also.
Yeah, do we have the minutes of what, what we had given them for guidance for how much to burn down?
No, not infringing me, but I did talk to Dawn, and Dawn did tell me that he did use a week already. And he thought that that's what you wanted him to use. And he didn't specify if it was last year or this year, but he said he did follow what you asked him to do. So, I assumed.
It's possible, cause I think it was close to two hundred hours that he had. So, a hundred and sixty is what we had set for him as a target. That sounds familiar.
So, if we ask them to, you know, use another, what if we, I, I don't know what you want to do. I'm just spitballing.
Another week.
You ask them to use one day a week until the end of the year and then roll over the difference? Or use up another week and then roll over the difference? Or just roll it all over, whatever you decide to do, but, but it might not be, you know, it's.
So, here's my thought on it, is that.
Can I, I want to, can I ask him a question?
Yeah, sure.
Do you have money left in your seasonal employee account that you could get one of those, one of them to come in and help out?
Yep.
So, there wouldn't be a problem if like they wanted to take off a whole week?
Sometimes, the seasonal help doesn't have a CDL, so that, you know, so it doesn't always fix my problem, you know? Sometimes it does, but not always, depending on what we going, what we have going on. You know, like right now, sweeping's about to start. You know, that's Donald usually.
Yeah.
Right.
So, it's like it's one thing after another. The seasonality changes, we got, and, and we always got something going on. So, it is a little bit of a struggle to find the time. And I look at it as it's their time and I don't tell them how to use it. I just tell them, use your time.
Right, so, so here's my thought, is, is, is we say yes with the understanding that Donald can't have more than a hundred and twenty hours at the end of next year? But if he wants to start using some of that, he, he has the option to burn it before the rollover or after? Does that make some sense?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so, he, he needs to target, when we're having this discussion next year, having no more than a hundred and twenty hours to rollover. And likewise with, with Mike, I think we had, I think he started with a hundred and got down to the eight.
Well, he's asked to roll over eight, so.
Yeah, I think he started though the year at a, did he have a hundred or did he have?
Probably, ah, I don't, I don't actually know. I don't know the numbers.
Yeah. But he needs to understand that, that next year, again, we probably wouldn't do more than, I'm thinking probably, what, sixty? In terms of a burn down, or, or does he need to target closer to, to fifty?
So, how many does he get when a year starts over?
Five weeks of vacation.
He gets five weeks of vacation plus?
Both of them?
No, just Donald. Mike is at three.
Okay, so he gets five weeks plus the four weeks he's asking for?
Yeah.
It's almost.
Yeah, well.
Plus, plus he's got sick time that he accrues monthly, and that comes out.
Sick time isn't, isn't, that's, in case you're sick. You get, you know, use that as for sick time. That's, that's something you're required to burn down.
No, right, right.
But vacation time, um, having nine weeks of vacation is a lot of vacation. So, using it up is, is probably a prudent choice.
Yeah, so, so, so I think, I think what I would say is that we're okay. I mean, my proposal would be that, that we say yes, but that he understands that by the time we're having this conversation next year, he needs to be down to a hundred and twenty.
Yeah.
So, he has to take all of his vacation plus a week.
Okay.
For next year, just like we did last year.
Okay, and what's he at right now, one sixty he's asking for?
He's asking to roll over one sixty.
Yeah.
So, he needs to be down to one twenty.
Forty less.
So, basically, he needs to take his five weeks plus a week.
Six weeks of vacation.
Next year.
Alright.
And it can be, and he can take it before the end of this year or, or any time in this next year, but that he needs to think of it from the perspective of the burn down.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, we're not telling him when and how to use it, but just that he needs to use that much of it.
Yes, just by this time next year, he has to take six weeks.
Basically, yeah. Or by, by July first of next year, he needs to take six weeks. Does that sound good to you?
Here, is it?
That sounds good.
Is it, like here in town, is the vacation that if it's booked, it counts? Or you have to actually take it for it to count?
I'm unfamiliar with that expression, if it's booked.
So, like if, if I, if I scheduled vacation, people don't, don't have any, but if I scheduled a vacation for August, a, a week, would that count towards this year's quota or next year's?
Next.
Next year.
Okay, so it's when you'd actually take it?
It's when you actually.
Okay.
Yes, yes, and things happen. I've taken eight weeks of vacation that haven't actually happened.
Yep.
So, so it's not, it, it, you can't count if it's booked.
Yeah.
So, I get where you're saying.
Yeah, no, I, the way mine is, for where I am, it's, it starts when you booked.
I didn't actually take any vacation, just so you know.
But I, I think that's where I'm at, is, is again, I'm okay with the rollover, but we have to get out of the accrual phase of this rollover and focus on a, a conscious burn down without actually taking anything away.
Okay.
Right, and I think it would be a good idea to set a policy. I know that the policy is that they can't roll over without permission, but to not exceed a certain amount of rollover going forward.
I think in the.
Once people have used up what they have, don't take anything away from anybody.
Right.
But once they've used up what they have, that, you know, going forward, you can only roll over one week or two weeks, something.
Yeah, or some, or some percentage of what they have.
Yeah, I think that's pretty common.
Other communities.
Yeah, that you're just capped.
Well, and, and I'm gonna tell you, in, in my job, in my current employer, you can't roll it over.
Yep, that's mine too.
You use it or you lose it, and that's the way that it works.
One to two weeks, but not typically more.
Right, not, not this kind of perpetual.
On a, on a positive note here with this, um, other towns have guy, have a bigger crew, and people can use it in the winter.
This is a perfect reason why we.
Why we need a larger.
We, we don't, I can't afford for people to take vacation in the winter, it would be detrimental, so. That's the plus, is no one asks, you know, and that's why we get to this time of year and we have.
Why, and, and that's one of the reasons why I don't want to make this punitive, if that makes any sense. It's not his fault, it's because he's been a good guy and done what the town needed, and that's why I don't want it just to be like, like. But at the same time, we have to be rational about not letting it continue to accrue. So, it's yet another bullet point of why you need to expand the highway department.
There you go.
So we get it.
Yep.
Anything else about this? So we, we probably, do we want to vote that?
Yeah, you should definitely vote that.
So can I get?
What are you doing with the other gentleman, you only discussed one?
Right, so I think with Mike, what we want to do is something similar, so, um. I think it's still fair to, even though he has less, to ask him to burn down an extra week next year. Do you agree? Or, or actually, do we want to have that talk of, a slight talk about that broader? What do you think that we would land on for a max in terms of rollover in the future? Is it two weeks?
I would say two.
Okay, so I mean technically, he's only at two weeks, right? So, so if we're gonna say max is two weeks, he's technically okay where he's at. So, um, can we have for the next meeting, let's see if we can draft up the policy associated with that? Um, with the, do you agree that two weeks is good?
Oh yeah, I, I agree too, we shouldn't, because this happens in some of your other departments too. With this rollover, like I, like you had said, excuse me, in the public sector, you know, you're not able to roll, roll over time. And I mean, I, I don't think that, you know, they should, I think, um, two weeks is plenty for a rollover.
I think it's reasonable, because like most people average about, you know, and I think we, most people start with two weeks, and then it goes up to three fairly quickly, and then it, you know, obviously Donald's in a position where he gets five. And so two weeks is still fifty percent of what he gets, and it's all of some people's.
That's all I got.
So, okay, um, so could we get a motion to, to have, um, to okay the rollovers with a, a requirement for Donald to be down to a hundred and twenty hours by the end of next year? And then, um, that, that Mike is at the threshold, so he's okay to just roll the eighty hours?
Okay, alright, I'd like to make a motion that, um, Donald roll his down to at least a hundred and twenty, is that what you said?
By the end of next year.
By the, by the end of this, this year.
End of next year.
Next year, and for Mike, basically, you know, do the same thing, you know, with eighty hours.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, I'm sorry that took so long, but it was a good discussion, and at least we've got a, a guideline for how we can be consistent across the town. So thanks for, thanks for taking the time with us. Anything else while we got you?
No, that's it.
Awesome, thank you.
Alright, I'll see ya.
What's the big old packet? Did I sign something in the wrong place?
We have these slots for witnesses on here, do we need to?
Wait, our witness Beth.
Very good, you know, I saw that and I just assumed that y'all were gonna sign it after.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we saw you sign it, it's not like it's a secret or a secret.
Would you want, yeah, I was gonna say, we want to go ahead and do the reports on the warrants side?
I'd like to do the reports on the warrants that I've signed, every, I looked them all over and everything was fine with no questions asked. And I'd like to have a, an expense warrant for three twenty-two twenty-two for a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars and five hundred and forty-one dollars and ten cents. Um, a payroll warrant for three twenty-three twenty-two for a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. A withholding warrant for three twenty-three twenty-two for sixty thousand dollars and six hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-nine cents. And then we also have an expense warrant for four five twenty-two for a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. Payroll warrant for four six twenty-two for a hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and five cents. And a withholding warrant for four six twenty-two for three hu, thirty thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Thank you for that. Alright, so the next, next is what was first, which was, um, the cable advisory contract coming up. So, um, our contract with Charter will expire four thirty twenty twenty-five. Um, and the process has to start thirty-six to thirty months before the license expires. Okay, um, we, we may want to form a cable advisory committee as part of the formal renewal process and delegated certain duties, because otherwise, that falls on us as the Board of Selectmen, correct? So, um, if we form a CFC, we've got to provide the Department of Telecommunications with a name and contact information for at least one CAC member. Um, and then they've enclosed a fact sheet regarding what their responsibilities are. Um, and then the department has also prepared a practical guide to table television license renewal, uh, which is available at their website. So, um, that is coming up, and all of that information is in the packet. And actually, a copy of the practical guide was included. Let me look, see here, we've got a copy of the prior contract, so. So, it sounds like we need, historically speaking, we have formed a committee. I know that we've run into some issues in the past where, with, with regards to getting and sustaining membership on it. Um, did you have a recommendation, Kelly?
So what I would suggest is that you form a cable committee of no more than five people. Because they can work in groups and not violate open meeting and quorum issues. They can take different tasks and go off and do their task and come back and forth to the group. So five is a, is a sustainable number, it's also not so big that you can't fill it and five make it warm and everybody has to be there all the time. So, see if we can find people who are willing to assist in regenerating a cable contract. And set a time limit, limit on how long we're gonna look, because this can't wait, these contracts are difficult. The last one I did took four years to complete. It was started a year and a half before I got there, and it was finished from, it was finished two and a half years in um, from when I arrived, and that is, was, there were many, many reasons why it took that long. Some was on part of the town, some was on part of the cable company, um, some was on councils for both sides. So it's something that needs to be begun immediately.
So, so let me ask you something, um, it says that we may want to form a, a CAC, and I agree that there's a lot of tasks and we do need to split up the labor. But in the meantime, would it make sense for us to talk hypothetically about whether or not you would be a member as like an ex officio member and give you as the point of contact so we can at least kick off the process?
That's fine with me if that's what you'd like to do.
I don't want the whole burden.
To devote to it till after town meeting, but.
I, I totally understand that, but it's, I, I almost feel like it's better to at least set up a point of communication earlier rather than later.
Put a limit on how long you're gonna look for a committee, and if there, we can't put one together, then the four of us can take it on and I'll be the point person and do the legwork for it.
That was actually kind of my default thought, was while we're looking, what if we started? Then could we hand off anything?
We could, but there's always a possibility that the committee will go in a completely different direction.
That's true.
So the work that we do now could be, um, duplicative, or it could be, it could be just spinning our wheels.
Yeah, I, I hate to ask it though, is how, I mean, I know that there's some flexibility with regards to the contract, but I know that there's very little. So, so.
Brutal negotiating, the last one, and, um, the cable company representative that I worked with is the same one that we have for Brookfield, is the same person that will be negotiating the contract with and working with. And, um, it's very, he's, he's got way too much territory, and so he doesn't, um, he's not difficult to work with, it's just he's stretched paper. So, getting stuff started is, is.
I don't think it's really.
But there really isn't a lot of.
I don't think there's a lot of ru, I don't think there's a lot of room for us to be a hundred and eighty degrees away from where the, the committee would wind up.
What, we have no control over content, we have no control over pricing. We have no control over build-out, we have a little bit of build-out. We can ask them to extend it to other areas. The only teeth that the town really has is if they don't negotiate in, in good faith, is we can send them a letter and say, you have thirty days to get all your equipment out of Brookfield, which is what I did in Wondell. And that was the only thing that brought them to the table. Because I was perfectly willing to follow through on it. The whole town's cable will be shut up, I understand, but that'll be a lot of money that they don't want to use, so. So, there's not a lot of, of negotiating that can be done there. They're lowering what they're willing to provide as far as funding, because it's based on users. And with Netflix and Amazon and all of the other.
Internet service.
Internet services, they are losing customer base, so they're hesitant to continue to provide the funding that they have in the past.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if within the next five years or so, most of it's gone.
It's gonna be gone.
They're gonna be internet providers and not cable providers fundamentally.
Well, that's essentially kind of what they are now anyways, is internet provider.
Yeah, so, you know, if you have, if you have your internet through Verizon and not through the cable company, as a customer that they don't have that doesn't need cable, so, so again.
Verizon has very little coverage and.
Well, that was just an example.
It's just Charter, right?
Well, there's, on the other side of the river, I think some people can get fires. Some of the folks that, I think there's, I think there's a couple of people on the very edges of town that, that are on trunks for fires.
Yeah, but, you know, like, like Adam said, they're becoming internet providers, so user fees are, are different. So then our take is different.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have cable, like TV.
Cable for, my daughter's twenty-nine now, for twenty-nine years, I haven't had television, so.
Yeah, I haven't either.
So, um, so I think, what I'd like to do is let's, let's give ourselves thirty days to find a committee. But in the interim, let's at least make the initial contact and get the initial information from them.
And, and like you said, I could be an ex officio member and a point of contact to disseminate information. Back and forth and make sure that it's done.
From experience, what's the probability of filling said committee, considering all of our others?
Varies from town to town, and I don't have enough of Brookfield's history, um, personal knowledge that I can answer that question.
We're also gonna have to be willing to say no to certain people who will probably want to be part of the contract negotiations. So we're gonna have to be ready to.
The cable committee does not negotiate, the cable committee puts together what it wants, it feels the town would like to have. Once they've put that package together, their job is complete. The negotiation then is taken over by you, myself, and Town Council. It is no longer, the committee's job is to say, this is what the people want, this is what we think would be a good contract. And once that's done, that's it, they don't get involved with the actual cable company.
Got it.
Other than information seeking. The negotiation is all done between the attorneys, which is worth every penny.
Penny.
There are attorneys that only do cable contracts. So, it's, it's worth, it's worth the.
Do we have anything, I, I hate to put it this way, fundamentally educational materials about what we even can ask for or go after?
No, but I can, I can reach out and, and see if I can find something.
Yeah, let's, let's see what, because I mean, there are probably people who are willing to serve, but who, if they aren't familiar with, with what the content is. I think asking somebody to serve on that without being able to provide some baseline information about, about what our options are and, and what we're making decisions about, it's, uh.
And, and what their specific role would be.
Yeah, and I think there's some specific guidelines actually for that committee about the holding of public hearings and dissemination of information, and I think there's actually a bunch of, of, um, state mandated guidelines about what the CAC does and does and can do and has to do.
Yeah, we have that. So yes, it is available, and you have it in your fingertips.
And we have it in our fingertips, so.
At least some of it, anyway.
Yep, here it is.
So we had, um, I had a cable committee that didn't want the town to sign the contract unless the cable company put a drop-off point for cable equipment in their town.
Oh wow.
Because the nearest one was in Springfield, and it was sixty miles away from the town that it was serving.
I think ours is either.
Is Auburn.
Spectrum is in Auburn.
Spectrum is in Auburn.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, I think it's, I think technically, as the crow flies, it's Auburn's the closest, I think drive time.
Which is not sixty miles away. These people were very adamant this committee was.
That's a long drive.
Focused on getting this done, and they wanted somebody to come to the town once every three months that would let all the residents come and play with the cable service. So it's just a beat up the cable company day. And the cable company's like, we are not the man of the contract, and I'm like, okay, I'm okay with that, because that's the deal. But there were, there were interesting things, because they didn't have the guidelines, and they didn't understand what they couldn't, couldn't ask for. Their intention is that they wanted to help the elderly residents who couldn't get their cable equipment back. They didn't understand what was, you know, why the garden channel wasn't available anymore, that kind of thing, so.
Okay, so we've got that information, I think we give ourselves thirty days, and until then, we do try to kick off the process, because as you said, it's, and, and I get that you don't have a bunch of time right now.
No, that's alright, I, I set it, I set an alarm to typically remind me that this needs to start now. This, um, dam issues that we need to address as soon as I have them.
Yes. Um, but speaking of dam issues, is, does Ryan have all the same information regarding the dam?
All of that was brought to me by Cindy when she left. I have all of it. So there's nothing down at the highway department anymore?
Ooh, got it. Alright, so we've got that done, so we didn't need any actual vote associated with that, correct?
Um, you can vote to create a cable committee, because you.
Alright, do you want to make a motion to?
To make a motion to create a cable committee.
Uh, yeah, a five-member.
A five-member cable committee, for, for the new contract that we're negotiating with.
I will second.
Um, just a point of discussion before we vote it, do we need to write up an explicit charter for that committee?
It wouldn't be a bad idea to put up guidelines for their, for the sin role.
So what, so what's, so, what's, do you want, do we want to bring one into the next meeting? Is that too quick?
Uh, that's too quick, yeah, I know, I'll reach out tomorrow if that's too quick. I am actually in school for the next three weeks, starting my, for my Brooklyn certification, so.
Got it.
Uh, mandatory recertification class.
Could a starting point be essentially these bullet points here?
Do you want to take a shot at it?
Yeah, I can take a shot at it.
I tell you what, Adam, Adam will bring a draft to the next meeting, and we can talk through that.
No, I'm saying we might have a charge from the last time we had a committee.
Yeah, and if you could research the last one. Yeah, present it to Adam, and then he can, he can try to, to cobble one together that makes sense.
My writing brain in.
Yeah, it'd be good for you.
I had to write the, uh, what you call it, thing, the year end. I had to write the, uh, what you call it, thing, the year end letter.
Yes, you did a great job on that.
I don't know, we've all had charts still.
Yeah, clerks, outstanding, so, okay, great discussion, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so, we've got the relocation poll discussion done.
The wage would be next.
Yep, wage would be next. So.
This has already been to the personnel board.
Yep, yep, I see signatures, how exciting is that, thank you for that. Okay, so we've got, um, wage authorization for Blake Karen for firefighter for seventeen fifteen, we've got one for Sarah Lyons as firefighter for seventeen forty-six, and we have one for Sarah Lyons as an EMS, uh, paramedic trainee at twenty dollars an hour. So, uh, can I get a motion to approve those three wage authorizations?
I would give a motion to approve the three wage authorizations, looking for unqualified, two for unqualified and one for EMS and trainee.
Yep.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. I actually put the wrong date, I put last year.
Oh, you did?
I did. I haven't done that much this year. Okay. Um, next thing is surplus declaration for the, um, twenty fifteen Cruiser. So, um, and fundamentally, I think if I remember correctly, we've got this on the agenda, we're gonna be, um, uh, we're going to be declaring it surplus and authorizing the use of it for, um, a trade in back.
Trading. Trading for the new vehicle, yeah.
Okay, so, um, could I get a, uh, uh, motion to declare a surplus to twenty fifteen Ford Explorer with the last four VIN of eighteen thirty-three?
I didn't hit, could I just hand it over, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, could, could you go ahead and give us a motion for the surplus, to declare a surplus that, that asset?
Okay, to declare a surplus for twenty fifteen Ford Explorer for the last, you want the VIN on there?
Yeah, the last four of the VIN.
The last is one eight three three for the police department.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then can I get a separate motion authorizing the use of that surplus equipment as a trade in for the, um, for the Cruiser that was authorized at the last town meeting?
When, what year was that one?
It's the same one, it's, you're just, you're just taking the one that you just made surplus and allowing the chief to use it as a trade in.
Okay, and so, now this one is for twenty, for the twenty fifteen.
Yeah, so, so basically we need a motion to declare the twenty, to, to authorize the use of the surplus Cruiser as a trade in for our new Cruiser.
All right, um, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, use the twenty fifteen from surplus to go to our, uh, new Cruiser.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. And then, um, let's talk a little bit about the, uh, animal control. So, um, we did receive a, um, formal resignation from, um, our prior animal control officer. And, uh, she indicated that, um, while she felt that the town and the select board had supported her in her role, that, um, she was no longer able to cope with some of the angry citizenry. And, uh, that the, the best thing for her and her family right now would be for the, the current assistant to become the full-time ACO and that she has offered to support that ACO until she can find a, a suitable assistant and complete her training.
So, she'd like to switch roles, be the assistant, be the assistant for the full time, well, full time, you know what I mean?
So, basically swap roles. Full time, primary.
Does, does the assistant want?
Yes.
She's willing.
Okay.
Yeah, she's willing, um, and, and are we, and, and are we facilitating her going and getting her training?
Well, we are required to do that, so, yes, we would, we would definitely, um, support her going as soon as possible.
So, what is Casey, Cassie's last name?
Cassandra Buffen.
Buffen?
Is there a record of any of the citizen issues pertaining to this?
There, it's really not something that I'm, I'm prepared to discuss.
No, no, I, I, it's, just yes or no is fine for me.
But here, here is, there is reporting of some of the citizen issues, but the issues are directly to her, so we don't have an actual record
Okay.
of what happened with the different situation.
So, do we want a motion to accept her resignation?
I, I think, I think what we need is a motion, um, approving the, the swap of the roles.
You need, you need to accept the resignation first.
No, we need to accept the resignation first.
Yes.
All right, so, we need a motion to accept her resignation as the, the primary animal control officer. We need to appoint Cassandra as the new animal control officer and then appoint Sarah as the assistant animal control officer.
I would like to, uh, a motion to, with regret, to accept the, uh, resignation of, uh, Sarah Purdue as our king, uh, what was it, what do they call it now?
Primary.
Animal control officer.
Primary animal control officer. I know, I know personally, she has gone above and beyond and it's really a shame.
Yeah, with regrets, we can accept her resignation, so, you want to second that?
I will second that.
Okay, and now, all in favor? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And now I would like to make a motion to, uh, to have Sarah Cassandra Buffen as the primary animal control officer and to, uh, also appoint Sarah Purdue as the assistant animal control officer.
Can I second that?
Yeah, I'll second that, I just was reading even.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, those are for your signature. Okay, um, and then we have three other appointments, we have, um, actually four election worker appointments, uh, one of them for Ashley Fontaine, one for Hannah Hill, one for Sabino Rio, and one for Heidi.
Prou.
Prou. Can I get a motion to that effect?
Uh, I would give you a motion to, to, uh, appoint the following election workers for the next scheduled election and of, uh, Ashley Fontaine, Hannah Hill, Sabrina Grillo, and Heidi Prou.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, um, so we did get a notification.
And you want to sign those and give them back to me and then I'll have them to give to Mike.
And then the next that we have, um, due to, so we're members of MEA and due to the financial strength of their programs and our favorable loss history near term at least, we are able to offer you a renewal proposal for twenty twenty-three, which includes a rate decrease of zero point three percent. Uh, this is on our property liability and workman's compensation coverages. Our overall contributions reflect changes in exposures, building values, vehicles, expenditures, payroll, or experience modification factors. In addition, MEA may provide participation and MEA rewards credits depending on our eligibility to assist the membership. We will provide a two point five percent prepay premium discount for fiscal year twenty twenty-three so long as the balance is paid by August one of twenty twenty-two. And they've given us a renewal summary to that effect. So, in a nutshell, they're gonna give us point three percent off and so long as we do what we've done historically, which is pay like at the first of the year, then we get two and a half percent off. Now, do the numbers work out that if we do it that way, that we don't have to budget anything additional other than the book premium? And then will the two and a half percent cover us from, in terms of, uh, insurance, potential insurance, like, um, deductibles?
I have to look at the map to see what the deductibles are because they're different for the different portions of the policies.
Okay, so, cause what I'd like to do is, is, you know, budget it appropriately, but, you know, take that into consideration.
So, typically, what I recommend is we budget it for what the full amount is because something happens and we don't pay it on time, we've gotta have that money.
Okay.
Then we also include in that budget whatever the deductibles are or however many deductibles we would have to pay in a year.
Okay.
And that way, whatever we don't have, we, we don't need, then yay, that's great, but if we do need it, we're not having a special town meeting to try and.
We're not. To, to try and fund it, okay, that's fine. So, but do you have, speaking of that, when, when do you think we'll be able to see a draft of the, of the budget?
I'm hoping I'll be having it in the email on Friday.
Okay, great, um, and so our overall, um, expected premium is gonna be a hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars for, um, it looks like that's for property and casualty, including liability, um.
We also need to have a window cause workers' comp gets, gets calculated at the end of the year, so, that we also need a buffer for.
Okay. Uh, is there anything else that we need to do associated with this?
You'll have to sign.
So, I have to sign?
But while we are talking about insurance, at the last meeting you had asked us to look into if Maya offers an additional health insurance and they do, um, which we're having open enrollment in May and a representative from Iowa will be coming out to give the, the town employees who are interested in town insurance the option to discuss, um, the, the third.
Option.
Yeah, the third option.
And it doesn't impact, it doesn't impact the availability of the plans that they're used to having, but it does give them a, the ability.
Gives them another option.
Yep, so, um, so can I get a motion to allow me to sign this, uh, the property liability and workman's compensation proposal?
Okay, I will, I'll give you a, a motion to sign the property and, um, compensation from, uh, for the twenty twenty-three renewal proposal from Maya.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, next thing on the agenda is, um, to approve the minutes from one eighteen fourteen.
I'll make a motion to, did everybody read them?
Yeah, everybody.
I would like to make a motion to approve the select board minutes from eleven eighteen fourteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we've received the cultural council meeting notes. Um, their treasures report, uh, regarding, they've still got thirty-three hundred in the Memorial Day Fund, and then, uh, fourteen hundred and ten dollars in appropriations and seven hundred and fifty dollars in their grant fund. The, uh, um, from their old business that they had responded to some correspondence from, from the garden club probably to do their, um, sale of plants on the green. Uh, and then they notified folk, um, the, the committee that, uh, or the cultural council that the ice rink will be at Lewis Field in twenty twenty-three. Um, so, and I, I think we're, we're working with the, um, the rec committee to see if we can find them some grant funding to help level the field there so that that's effective, right? And then, uh, um, they're working on contacting bands and the like for Memorial Day, so. And the PTO is working on getting information and getting some volunteers to do the, uh, Flanders Field and Gettysburg Address. Anything else in terms of communications, I think that's it for that. And then, uh, old business bylaw changes and progress in the town meeting articles?
So, when I went over the bylaw changes review, I, I actually found another one that needed to be addressed. Because of the way the personnel bylaw is written, we need to add the town accountant and the town treasurer to the list of, of people who are approved positions cause they were accidentally omitted, so it's basically a screamer's error. They should have been on the list, they were on the original list, but when the list got transferred onto the warrant, they were not on the list. Also, it only says part-time police, not full-time police. There's no fire chief and there's no emergency services chief and there's no police chief, endless list. So, it just needs to be updated to reflect what it should have said originally.
From the first time.
So, I just wanted, because that wasn't actually, um, on the list of bylaws that I mentioned, so that's why I wanted to.
Okay, great. Is there, um, what I don't see on here, and I know this was a screamer's error, but is this the opportunity to also put the cable coordinator on?
That needs to be voted and created at town meeting first, so the warrant article says it is done.
I thought we, I thought we created one, but then we just never updated the bylaw to include it.
Then, yes, that would be here, yes.
Yes, we did, I remember we did.
Yeah, cause I, I, uh, two years ago?
No, that was done a couple of years ago.
Okay, it was, it was two years ago.
I remember being at a meeting.
Yeah, so, so we have voted that position.
All right, do we know what grade they were?
We never established a grade as part of that.
I don't think we ever did that in the personnel committee.
So, if we're gonna add this to the bylaw, it needs to be put in a grade, so we need to know what the grade is.
Right, well, I think.
How are grades determined?
That's a good question, I wasn't here for that process, so I didn't know what process Brookfield used. I know that the.
Cause looking at, looking at this, looking at this, I'm curious.
I know that the Collins Center.
This isn't the Collins Center.
Classify different, different positions with certain grades based on the type of work that was similar. So, all of the clerks are a certain grade, cause they're all doing clerical work, part-time officers, part-time officers.
Yeah.
Um, library assistants, depending on the level of specified and specific knowledge required to function in the job. Although in a municipality, every single department has very specific.
Oh, yeah.
requirements and knowledge for each position. For instance, a planning board clerk would need to know a lot of planning board laws, so the board health clerk would need to know the board health laws.
Yeah, it's difficult for them to go.
Conservation and, um, and, uh, ZBA, all are very, very, to refer to it species specific means. So, I, that's why it should be classified, but I don't know how, how this works.
Now, this is an old one that was in the book.
This is what's in your bylaw.
Yeah, that was old from the.
And I added the ones that were missing and I highlighted mine, if you can see the highlights.
I mean, I would lean just because of, just because of the technological knowledge requirements and the technical, the, the special technical knowledge, I'm thinking of five?
Higher than a water operator.
No.
Well, water operators are five.
Water operators are four.
Oh, it's a four, okay.
Yeah, there's only one five, I didn't inform you.
Ah.
There's only one five, one three.
So, probably four then, probably a four.
Okay.
But I, is it the one, is it the one that we're doing from the Collins, isn't it higher?
Senior libraries.
But we didn't adopt that, so I can't, can't tell you.
Okay.
It is a special.
Libraries are complicated.
They are, they're much more complicated than they, I mean, most libraries, most libraries in big towns require a master's degree in order to be, you know.
But you can go to school, you can go to school for, you know.
I think Brenda has her master's.
You have to have a master's degree to be a library director with a certain size.
Yes, she has it.
Yeah, it's complicated, yeah.
The town is not allowed to hire someone that does not have a master's degree in library science.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, I, I mean, I would say it's probably, I, I don't think it's any lower than a four because there's a lot of.
No, definitely not lower than a four.
Yeah. So, so let's go ahead, um, let's go ahead and include that.
Okay, yeah, I.
Because, like I said, I'm, I'm, and we can go find the warrant article and probably could just ask Mike.
Hold it down, hold it down.
Yeah, um, but I know we voted it.
And that was, you said, a couple. And that was, you said, a couple of years ago?
Yeah, I wanna say it was
I remember that, it was a couple
Three, four years?
It was a couple, yeah.
It was either nineteen or twenty.
Yeah.
I think it was twenty, alright.
I know we did it, though.
Yeah.
I started going to town meetings four years ago, five years ago. So it's within the last four years.
Okay, and then progress on the town meeting articles, which this this, thank you for this.
So I went through, um as you know, I went back to two thousand and eighteen and pulled out all the things that weren't done and the list that I originally gave you, the everything is done except the walking path, which is always completed, that we finished uh by Gettysburg. The planning board is in charge of the master plan, so that one is shouldn't be on my list of things to do. So I can't I can't do anything with that. That's a planning board responsibility under the law. And I don't even know that that it's just an update, but I don't know that they we've been aware of that.
Well, and at one point, we we were supposed to have a separate committee that was gonna do that work, and I think that that separate committee kind of devolved. So we we may need to look at how we're gonna execute that.
We just need to look at it and see what it needs, you know, it needs to go up.
Yeah.
Be done, how, so.
And we may even be able to try to enlist support from like CMR PC and and find out what it would take to just get it, I know.
This is what it would take. CMR PC would do it all. All we gotta do is get the warrant.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, but I'm thinking that we may just need to see if.
Well, we have a budget for it. We can reach out to them and say, what can you do for this?
Right.
Get hurt.
Yeah, we could ask them what would you get for it.
If the planning board would like to do that, they're the ones who are supposed to, they need to initiate it.
Okay.
We don't have the authority, you don't have the authority, I don't have the authority.
Could we could we send a a correspondence?
Correspondent.
Yeah, could we send a correspondence to request information or an update or something?
From planning or from CMR?
From planning board.
I don't know.
There we go.
We'll be tomorrow.
Understood.
And do you remember Clarence dealt with, um was it Pierce was her last name?
Janice.
Oh, Janice.
Janice on PvP's uh
Yeah, Janice.
Pioneer Valley, and I think that she actually came in with a good price. I remember
Yeah.
he did a guesstimate a while ago, so that's another one to reach out to also. We're not required to use the CMR PC, we can use a different.
So
Because they're regionalized, I I wasn't continentally.
We've we've gone either side of that line for different things, depending on what we've been doing.
Okay, interesting. Interesting, okay.
And I I don't know the how or why or the mechanics of when we've gone with one versus the other. Like, we found our accountant service through Pioneer Valley.
That's right, because you got them through a bit.
Yeah.
We did, we we actually managed to pile on.
Yeah, I did.
We've also gotten burned by going through Pioneer Valley because at one point we were getting our electric through a Pioneer Valley agreement and we actually wound up paying more, not less, so we wound up getting out of that agreement.
Yeah, electricity's a crapshoot.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we wound up getting out of that agreement and just dealing with, you know, the the whole stuff that we have with the the solar farm. How far are we from the end of the technical, like contracted life on our solar farm?
This I do not know.
Cause I I think if if I recall the documentation, the one that's on the on the uh trip on the old uh municipal dump, the landfill.
Which one? Oh, that one.
I can't remember if it's a twenty-year or a thirty-year facility. And if it's a twenty-year, I think we're ten years into it.
Yeah, we are, because that happened the first year I that happened the first year I remember I got in.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're halfway into the to the formal life of that.
Yeah, that was twenty, yeah, I came through in twenty thirteen.
And we're gonna need to make a determination fundamentally whether to keep it in service or not, to decommission it or cause because the 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 formal life of them is is like twenty or thirty years, but the the true functional life may be more or less depending on how well it's it stood up. And and, you know, without a lot of moving parts, depending on how the materials are holding up, it may hold up pretty well or may not.
You know, it's supposed to be adding those to money. I'm excited because I've got one thing left on my list.
Well, it's the last thing on this list. It means we need to start a new list.
Fair enough, fair enough.
So 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 it's kind of like my 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 private sector job, okay, one of the running jokes on my team is that we're working on getting a whole bunch of our work automated, okay? But I keep pointing out to people every time we find something to automate, all the stuff we're not currently doing in our space. So so everybody on my team whose primary concern is job security loves their job because they're like, we are never gonna run out of work.
That's awesome.
And they support the initiatives to automate stuff because they're never gonna run out of work. So um we're, you know, you've got one list done, let's celebrate one list getting done as we write the second list.
Alright, so the only other thing left on the list is the chairlift. And I had a contractor come in, um who looked at the space and stayed us a quote, I should have it probably next week. And then um because I've reached out to I I reached out to three different elevator companies via the email system and got no reply from any of them. Um and we've we've done our due diligence in trying to get somebody in uh to quote the the project and it was within a threshold of just needing to see quotes was not outside of that.
And those count as no bids, yeah.
So.
And those count as no bids fundamentally.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct. So although I do think this one is gonna come in over, um there's a caveat that because it was it came in under when we initially started and we acted in good faith on the quote that we got.
And we I mean, I went physically tried the door knock.
Physically went to their location and knocked on their door and spoke with them, and they still didn't come out. They're like, oh, my goodness, we'll be out right away. And then he left and he and they never showed up, so.
It's also been four years too and prices
Prices have changed considerably.
Yes.
So that that's in the works. And there may be an alternative if we can't get the chairlift. I need to double check, but if we can if we can project what's occurring upstairs to a handicap accessible location and there's an ability for people to participate, then we don't need the chairlift and we can we can then put in a technological solution
Yeah.
to
Oh, yeah, just it's just CCTV.
Well, we it would need to be able to work both ways because if we go back to the meeting of the people that are down here, they need to have the ability to participate.
Well, yeah, you can.
There needs to be somebody down here that can facilitate for them with the authority.
We we did that out in years ago and we used the upstairs. We would have we would have it downstairs here, too.
Yeah.
You need to set up a projector.
So that's just thinking about the cost of alternative.
Get a good projector and a good mic and and a good good speaker system.
Thousand bucks can get you a projector and a screen, that's good.
So, yeah.
I know a thousand dollars is a thousand dollars, but.
So the money that was already voted at uh the town meeting, we may need to vote to allocate to an ADA compliance budget as opposed to a chairlift budget so that we don't lose that money.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the difference.
We can we can reallocate it and still achieve the same goal that the chairlift was for.
Yeah.
If the chairlift doesn't work out, so we'll see.
Yeah, and and actually, that may be a good idea regardless.
I I think it is a good idea because it'll make so much more of this building functional.
Right.
Maybe some of the overage uh that we'll have left will we can apply someone else for
For other
Yeah.
Other bene- other thing, other things that benefit the accessibility of town hall and the overall ADA plan.
Yes.
So.
Exactly.
Like changing the lights.
Yeah.
We had somebody come in and look at it, we're getting a quote on on upgrading the lights.
Oh, great, going to LED?
Mm-hmm.
And maybe something without so much flicker, because I actually get headaches.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly why the fluorescents are not popular.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get my greens on.
Insulating insulating the building to help reduce fuel loss.
Consumption, yeah.
Yeah.
It's well worth the cost to insulate.
Absolutely, I was surprised there was no insulation and nobody had thought to put insulation. Maybe they did, they just didn't have the funding to follow through, so.
Well, it's expensive, yeah.
Yes, see y'all in the above.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Awesome. Do for just to add on to the walking pathway, um will some announcement possibly be made to kind of tell everybody?
We need to talk about that at the department head meeting.
Thinking about ribbon cutting.
Yeah.
At the at the at the department head meeting that came up that maybe we should do a ribbon cutting just to celebrate the fact that that
Like it's everything's done over there.
these things are done.
So one of the grants that we're looking at is to level the soccer field. It's it's another park grant that we got for the walking path.
Yeah.
Um and level the soccer field, the soccer field, the ball will help place put the skating rink in there.
Yep, and and that would help with drainage, because I don't know if you've been after over there after rain?
Uh, no.
It it can get quite uh quite squishy.
It's pretty bad, yeah, it's pretty bad, so.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so I I don't know if you want to do two ribbon cutting.
Why not? It's two big pairs of scissors.
I like it. Two big ribbons, two big pairs of scissors.
So um so I think that's great. So then the last thing is correspondence. We've got the charter communications annual notification. We were both, we were a little ahead of term. I was trying to pack up and we're not quite done yet. So um they've sent us their annual notice, including billing practices, equipment notices, and a sample subscriber bill and a sample work order. Um and then we've got some upcoming programming changes. So um fundamentally, um we are ceasing the distribution of CR one Russia effective March third, twenty twenty-two. Um and they've dropped um Russian Control and Program Networks like NTV, America, RTR Planet, Russia twenty-four, and CTC. So all of those were separate subscriptions and um people who lose it are going to get a discount. And uh then there are some packages with partial content that are gonna get lost, Russia View Premium, Russian Passport, Russian Pass Plus, and Russian Pass Max. And then Russian, um and those are going to um have discounts because they're losing any of the content that actually comes from Russia. So I mean, these the the sanctions are really serious. I mean, this is starting to touch like huge part swaths of the economy in terms of enforcing the sanctions against Russia. And uh this then the last one is a notice that um Story TV satellite feed will be added to SPP extended basic and standard tier HD channels on channels one fifty-six and four eighty-nine. The new launch date um is going to be May fifteen instead of March twenty-eight, so they're gonna be a little slow getting some of the new content that's coming. Uh that is all we have for this evening. Can I get a motion to adjourn as of
Seven thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, yeah.
Motion to uh I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at seven thirty uh yeah, seven thirty-nine.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.